The Town of Plainville. Established in 1721 at the geographical center of Connecticut.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our Town Council meeting. Tonight is Monday, April 2nd, 2018. I will ask Councilwoman Wazarko to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance if you'll all stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening we have on our agenda two presentations, however, we will only be doing one. One of our other honorees will be here at our next meeting, but first we have Kathy Liqueur. Kathy? And Councilwoman Moranti is going to say a few words. So Kathy?
Why don't you stand up Kathy? Here we are.
We're here tonight to honor Kathy Liqueur, who has spent an extraordinary 36 years as a member of the Library Board of Trustees. And not only that, but she has spent the last 10 years, just ending when her term ended in November, as chairperson of a library board. So it's really quite an extraordinary accomplishment. Kathy, under her tenure, has seen many accomplishments. Obviously, we've gone from a largely print-based library to one that offers all kinds of digital media that you can access not only from the library, but from your home or from anywhere in the world, 24/7. She's seen new staff over the years and also oversaw, as part of the board, a really major renovation and expansion that's given us a very beautiful library here in Plainville.
Yes, the decision.
Yeah, and the library has also become a real hub of community activity. A lot of people using resources, meeting spaces, cultural programs, and very importantly, a lot of things promoting literacy, especially in our very excellent children's programs. And equally important is that the library not only provides a lot of competent and very helpful advice and assistance to people, but I think that it has increasingly become over the years a very welcoming environment for all members of the community and very, very focused on customer service. And none of this could be possible unless we have a very forward-looking, very proactive, and very supportive Library Board of Trustees. And Kathy has certainly been a very integral part of that group and has helped accomplish all of these changes and really deserves so much thanks from the town and appreciation. And I do have to say, a little personal note, Kathy and I are related. About 100 years ago, our two grandfathers, two brothers, Pat Leone and Rocco Moranti, left a little town in central Italy and decided to come to Plainville and to raise their families here. And here we are today, Kathy. Thank you again very much for all you've done.
Thank you so much. I didn't expect all this. Also, Carrie is here, who's now our director, and we're in the process of finding another. And we had all those years with Peter, which was certainly helped when I was on the Board of Directors. That was a big help, and Carrie's been a huge help. And it'll go forward. I know after all these years, I just didn't think at first it could go on without me, but it can. And it will. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. I'm gonna wait for this. Thank you. On behalf of the council, Kathy, I would like to commend you on your years of service and thank you so very much for all that you have done for the library. I'm sure you will be a familiar face there going forward, but volunteers who, in our communities, step up to do these jobs are to be admired. And for such a long period of time, you certainly had a sense of dedication and love of our library. So thank you once again for all that you have done.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have on our agenda a public hearing. I'll ask our town clerk to please read the notice before we entertain comments.
Thank you. Notice is hereby given that the Plainville Town Council will hold a public hearing on Monday, April 2nd, 2018, at 7:00 PM in the council chambers of the Municipal Center, 1 Central Square, for the purpose of hearing public comment on the Town Council's fiscal year 2019 proposed budget dated at Plainville, Connecticut, this 29th day of March.
Thank you. At this point in time, I will welcome anybody that wishes to speak to the public hearing on the budget. To come to either one of our podiums, please state your name and address. Before you do so, I will comment that the budget the council has approved to go forward to the voters is $60 million, oh fifty-six, oh fifty-eight, which is a 2.62 percent increase. So we've just finished our work this evening. At this point, we'll take comments from the public. So anybody that wishes to do so, please use either microphone, state your name and address. Does anybody wish to speak to the budget?
Good evening. My name's Jim Lenoise, Senior. I live at 10 James Place. I'm a member of the Plainville Fire Company and a safety officer for the Plainville Fire Department. I speak to you tonight not only as a member of these fine organizations, but also as a homeowner, a business owner, a taxpayer, and a voter. And my comments concern the replacement of Engine 1 and the path that I think the town is taking in the replacement of Engine 1. I have a few bullet points I'd just like to cover. The current Engine 1 was purchased in 1989. Next year, that makes the truck 30 years old. It's served the town very well. The current condition of Engine 1 has relegated the engine as a spare to be used only when absolutely necessary. The pump on the engine needs substantial work, and there's some safety issues with the vehicle. If Engine 1 replacement is added to a referendum, as has been suggested, with the tower truck replacement, to go out for bonding and the referendum does not pass, Engine 1 replacement could be pushed until the next budget cycle. I understand that that might be different now after your meeting earlier, however, still a concern of ours. I need not remind you that the state funding is all but drying up and will put even greater stress on our town in future years in the budget process. Failure to replace aging equipment can and will impact our ISO rating, something maybe people are not thinking about. An aging fleet means lower ISO ratings, which means more money that local businesses, business owners, and homeowners like myself will have to pay for insurance. Previous fire chiefs and town councils have worked very hard to establish and maintain a favorable ISO rating. We understand, or I understand, the cost of public safety is very, very expensive. Our town is very fortunate to have a dedicated volunteer fire company that provides service to this town. This keeps the fire department budget very low in comparison to other towns and municipalities of our size and population. The fire company and fire department asks for very little from the town other than equipment to keep our town safe. We don't want this engine, we need this engine, to continue to provide the adequate, appropriate level of service, public safety for the town. Our little town has two major state highways, 84 and 72, along with several busy state roads, including Route 10, very active railroad yard that has a large number of hazardous materials with a larger number of propane cars parked in the yard at any given time, a large propane facility at the town line, an airport, five public schools, a good number of industrial and commercial entities, a large shopping venue, Connecticut Commons, and a good number of multifamily dwellings that include condos and apartment complexes, also a large number of residential homes. Our run volume in Plainville averages over 500 calls a year. That's 500 fire service calls, no medicals. The town of Plainville owns five major pieces of apparatus assigned to the fire department: Engine 1, 1989; Tower 1, 1994; Engine 3, 1999; Engine 4, 2004; and a rescue truck, brand-new rescue truck that we got in 2012. The problem is, if we don't have a strategy for replacement for these pieces of equipment, we'll soon find ourselves in a position of spending large amounts of money to keep this older equipment properly maintained. A good example of that is our recent repair to the tower truck, better than $70,000 to $80,000 just to keep the thing on the road. Although binding may be a solution to reestablish a long-term strategy, if a referendum does not pass by the town voters, the town is merely kicking the can down the road, and we're going to have to replace these pieces of equipment sooner or later. NFPA 1911, a standard for inspection, maintenance, testing, and retirement of in-service automotive fire apparatus, 2017 edition, states that apparatus over 15 years old should be placed in reserve status and be considered for refurbishment to bring the apparatus into compliance with the firefighter's safety components of NFAP, NFPA 1911, 1912, and 1901. It also states that any apparatus over 25 years of age that does not comply with these current standards should be retired from service. Just thoughts to think about. I would ask that you folks think about this very hard because our town's public safety is at risk, so do the right thing. Thank you for your time.
I have a list of folks that have signed up. Before we continue, Chief, I just want to make sure these folks signed up to speak. I want to see if they're here for the public hearing or if they're here for our public comment section. Candace Hall, did you wish to speak to the public hearing, or are you here for the public comment section?
Public comment.
Public comment. The next one on this list is Kurt Plord. Kurt, are you here for the public hearing? You would be next.
Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak. My name is Kurt Plord. I live at 86 Westwood Avenue, and I'm the captain of the Plainville Fire Company. I'm speaking to you tonight in support of including the purchase/lease option to replace Engine 1 in this year's budget. We're cognizant of the budget issues that you face, and we're taxpayers too, but the replacement of Engine 1 needs to happen this year. We can no longer put this off. This is based not on a simple want or a nice-to-have, it's based on a need. Ensuring the safety of our volunteer firefighters should be of the utmost importance. Advances in technology, especially over the past 30 years, have outclassed previous versions of apparatus and safety. Now you can get a fire truck that's equipped with airbags and rollover protection where just 10 to 15 years ago that wasn't available. There's a lot of specialized equipment on these vehicles, such as the pump, and keeping vehicles in service puts us behind in safety technology advances. Parts availability for older apparatus is becoming more and more of a concern. Engine 1 is approaching 30 years old. At a certain point, manufacturers and vendors simply stop making parts. I believe the right solution is to include the purchase/lease to replace Engine 1 in this budget year and not put it off any longer. Other apparatus, such as Engine 3 and the tower, will also be coming up for replacement in the near future, so the time is now. Thank you.
Are you here for the public hearing, Phil?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Phil Brusso, 151 Broad Street. I just can't really add anything more than what was said or will be said, other than that, should this go to a referendum, I do not think that is the right way or avenue to go about a, to address a piece of equipment or apparatus that may save your life or a life in this town. You know, we do our best, and we just ask that you all do your best, please, tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Lisa Toner. I live at 59 Julie Road. I hemmed and hawed about speaking this evening because, we all know, I'm the chief's wife. I've been, we've been together for 40 years, so 40 years is longer than the 30-year-old truck that you're voting on. I know my husband pretty well, and he typically has an open mind, and he'll listen to things, and he'll weigh things in his mind, and I tend to follow his lead. However, I do have a vested interest in having him and also all of our PFD family members to come home safely and also to keep our town folk safe. It's very important. I also have a question that has been weighing on my mind, thinking, I wonder how many of us out here have a vehicle that's older than 30 years? Okay? So let's think about that.
Can you say that again, because you weren't speaking in the mic? I didn't hear it.
Oh, I'm sorry. I wonder how many of us out here?
Speak to me.
Out here, I wonder how many of us out here have a vehicle that's older than 30 years old?
My husband's close.
But my point is, is that I just want to keep everybody safe, and my husband wouldn't be fighting for something if he truly didn't think that it was need.
My name's Robert Planeta. I live at 17 Rabidou Road. I am the second assistant chief in the fire department. I have also been a member since 1999. I don't know of any one of you who's been on the end of a hose line inside a structure fire and have the hose line go dead on you. I've been there. I was in a room, there was no fire in it. All of a sudden, there was flames all around us. I went to open the hose line, there was no water. It's a lousy feeling. Here, we got a truck that's 30 years old, carrying the water. Did you guys know darn well what it does to your faucets at home, sitting in this pump 24 hours a day for 30 years? And you want these men and women to trust their lives on the other end of that line in a fire? You've got to think about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff Johnson?
Jeff Johnson, 32, Peach Orchard Hill. Just wanted to say a couple of things about the need of this truck. We're a one-horse town. We have a car fire, it's a general alarm. Everything goes out, just about. The other night, just last night, had two fires almost at the same time. This is common occurrence, okay? When you have two trucks, let's say, three trucks committed to the highway, we have only one pumper left, that's the reserve piece, that's got to be just as good as those three pieces up on the highway. You know, it comes down to a trusting situation. You know, do we feel that Engine 1 is trustworthy to be basically a front-piece apparatus when it's the second, when it's got to go out? I ask you tonight if you would please consider making sure that we get this truck in the budget. The Plainville Fire Company and department here is your best deal in town. That's about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that's taken care of those that have signed up, and I'll open it up for anybody else. Chief, I think you were next.
Hi, I'm Kevin Toner, 59 Julie Road here in Plainville. Fire chief currently. Well, a lot of the folks stole my thunder tonight. I was hoping to speak a little earlier, but there's a couple of things that I want you to think about. Yesterday afternoon, while most of you were enjoying your holiday lunch, we were at a structure fire. A rescue truck, a tower, two Class A pumpers, the only thing left in the barn was Engine 1. What if we had another alarm? What if it was your house? What if it was your neighbor, somebody you loved? Do you want to wait for mutual aid to show up? I don't. I'm not willing to risk my firefighters' lives or the lives of our citizens that we've been sworn to protect the chance. It's not the right thing to do. We need to make sure we replace this truck this year. I've got all the same bullet points that everybody else talked about. Takes a year to build a pumper now, where it used to be four months. You know, even if, I know it's probably not an option now, if we went over the $800,000 that they wanted to spend in a capital budget, and we went over by $75,000, it comes out somewhere around 68 cents a house per month for the fire protection to replace that pumper. It's time to replace it. Like Mr. Planeta said, if you've ever been inside a fire and the only way you have out of there is that hose line in your hand and that thing dries up on you, crazy thoughts go through your mind. I've been chased out of fires like that. It's not a good feeling, especially when it's a mechanical failure that's 100% preventable. And in this case, it would be preventable. We owe it to our firefighters, our volunteers, and all of our citizens to make sure that they're well-protected. They're here volunteering their time. Let's make sure they all go home safe. Thank you.
Does anybody else wish to speak?
My name is Martin Sheraldi, a firefighter and homeowner here in town, and thank you for this opportunity to speak for a few minutes regarding the Plainville Fire Department's Engine 1. I'm not here to talk about the budget, the numbers, or the politics involved. I'm here as a firefighter, homeowner, and member of this community. My concern is for my brother and sister firefighters, the businesses and residents of our town. As you know, and you've heard all night, Engine 1 is approximately 29 years old and has passed its expected service life of 20 to 25 years. It needs repairs and upgrades that, given its age and current value, make no sense to do. To do this work would take Engine 1 out of service for several months or more, resulting in an increased risk for the firefighters, businesses, and residents of our town. Engine 1 is currently being used only when absolutely necessary, often when responding to a call, Engines 3, 4, the tower, and the rescue are dispatched, leaving only Engine 1 to protect our town. We have to rely on mutual aid, which can take 15 to 30 minutes to arrive, which is a very, very long time in terms of fire. A pumper takes water from a hydrant, controls pressure, and distributes that water to hose lines. Also, we have three sets of double hydrants in the town, which require a pumper to pressurize the hydrant system above these double hydrants. If the pumper fails, we have no water. As firefighters, we need to know that when we go in, we will have water. As homeowners, we need to know that the firefighters will arrive safely and have the water needed to knock down the fire and rescue us if needed. During a residential structure fire, as much as several hundred thousands of gallons of water can be used in a relatively short time. Without water from a hydrant, the water tank on an engine/pumper lasts only a few minutes at best. If the engine or pumper fails, the result could be catastrophic. We're talking life and death situations here and the loss of a structure as well. I've handed out a few pictures of a fire on Maxine Road across the street from my home on Thanksgiving 2015. These pictures are of the fire at only a few minutes in, and will give you a very real look of what we go into when doing our jobs. One of the double hydrant systems was located across from the fire and was used due to the fact that this location is at the end of a hydrant system where very little water pressure is available. Again, if the pumper fails, there's no water. The fire was very hot, it spread very rapidly due to a huge source of fuel, and there were some very, very scary moments for the crews while fighting this fire. Thankfully, everybody got out safely this time, although sadly, a family pet did perish in spite of the efforts to revive it. We need Engine 1 replaced ASAP in this budget now. We can't go longer. We can't take time to see what happens, what if, if circumstances change. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak to the public hearing? Anybody else?
No, no, no. Joanne? Al, you've got to wait until the public hearing.
Okay. Does anybody else? Tommy?
Is this the general hearing on the budget or what?
This is the budget.
Public hearing.
Yes.
My name is Thomas Machini, Senior, 44 Forestville Ave. I'm a 34-year veteran of the fire department and the fire company. Currently hold the position of deputy chief, and I'm in charge through chief as fleet maintenance. The past three to four years, the maintenance program has been tapped out. We're constantly having the trucks fixed or breaking down. And when the truck breaks down, it doesn't go to your local dealership, like Parsons Buick, and you walk in and you get it fixed. It's a long road to get some of these trucks fixed. And like the chief said, we don't worry about the fire we're at, we're about the fire that's coming behind us. That's the way we're all brought up here. We know what we're doing at the fire. We worry about the rest of the town. And if you don't think I stay up nights worrying about trucks breaking down, getting calls in the middle of the night that truck broke down, Engine 1 goes to a first-line automatic. And if you don't think we swallow hard when we have to use that truck, it's just unbelievable. And to go to a referendum this fast is just too much. I think, you know, we were told back in 2013 that the Engine 1 is right up there, right after we get done with this rescue, we'll be into Engine 1 replacement. That has not happened. That hasn't even been thought about in four years. It's time to get a program together and stick with the program. We were told we were going to get it, and there's a chance we're not going to get it. And I don't know where the town's going to stand if we don't get it. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak to the public hearing? Joanne?
Joanne Edman, 166 West Main Street. It sounds like a no-brainer to me that we need a new truck. We already are talking about this budget that's $60 million plus, 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 plus. And I'm thinking, I'm trying to be common sense here, that the Board of Education is already getting 60% of the pie. They're getting a lot of money. And all we've heard, all down, I know it doesn't affect the budget this year, but all we've heard is that we've got to replace and update the Wheeler School, we have to spend $2 million on the parking lot over at the high school. I think that's outrageous. That $2 million could go to a new truck. I mean, think about it. $2 million that you're asking from the state, that we're going to have to kind of pay part of that. I mean, I don't even know if you're going to get that money. But somehow, maybe can't we cut the budget on the Board of Ed's side somewhere so that they can get their truck? This is the safety of the town. This is, like I said, a no-brainer. They need a new truck. So that's, and I'm going to say another thing about the budget. I really don't feel like paying my taxes. You know why? I'll tell you why. And it's on Fox News, already they're starting to talk about it. Once you start putting prayer back in the schoolroom, and I know that they're saying the Pledge of Allegiance, for sure, every single morning, and they are, those kids are singing the National Anthem without getting down on their knees and standing up the way they should. That's to me when I maybe feel like paying my taxes. But give them a new truck, for goodness sake.
Does anybody else wish to speak to the public hearing? Yes, sir?
Tim Lennon, 14 Woodland Street. I did not prepare a speech tonight. Joanne brought up a good point. The budget for the town, approximately $60 million. The Board of Ed budget is 60% of that, $36 million. The fire department's budget is .6% of the town's budget. The fire department operates on $375,000, give or take, okay? No other budget or other fire department that I know of operates on such a minimal budget, okay? The rescue truck, I was a secretary on the rescue truck committee. I worked on that truck for two years. The deal we made with the town council, whose some members are still sitting there, knew that Engine 1 was in just bad need to be replaced as the rescue, but we only have one rescue. We had three pumpers. Now we basically have two and a half pumpers. The tower will need to be replaced soon. Average cost of an aerial is $1.3 million on a good day. You're going to roll in the problem of a tower and a new pumper into a budget? So you're going to fight for $2 million? The rescue was bought on a lease purchase option, about $100 grand a year. That's- That's probably one teacher's salary. There's no reason why the town of Plainville shouldn't have a new pumper. We do our part to protect the town. You need to do yours.
Does anybody else wish to speak to the public hearing?
John Kissler, 65 Forestville Ave. Well, I expected the Town Council to reduce its budget a little bit, but it doesn't look like we're gonna. It's like it was presented the first time. But what I will say, I have to support your budget as you presented it. You people know the ins and outs and what we can afford, what you wanna bond, what you wanna put to referendum. And I'm gonna trust you, and I'm supporting your budget with your plan with the Fire Department for their vehicles, 'cause you guys are the ones who know about the financial part. The taxpayers are getting hammered from all ends, and it's time, you have, everybody has to sacrifice here. Talking about the Board of Ed wants this and they get their budget, the police want theirs, park and rec. Everybody has to give a little, 'cause the taxpayers are getting squeezed. So I'm gonna go with your, what you voted and what you recommended, and the voters will have the final say on that. Thank you.
Does anybody else wish to speak to the public hearing?
Mr. Frangos?
Mr. Frangos, 10 Fairbanks Street, resident. What I'm just, I'm talking for the Fire Department. There should be no question of, at all, whether that fire truck should be purchased, none whatsoever. The reason I say this is, number one, it's gotta remember that these folks, men and women, are volunteers. Volunteers. And what that really comes down to, if something tragically happens, they've done it to save us. Volunteers. Number two, safety. Talking about hoses drying up, et cetera, et cetera. Paramount. Safety to the firefighter. That would be tragic for somebody. I, I can't imagine being stuck in a building and, and the hose going dry. That has to be considered. So I guess what this really got me going was, when they're called, they're out there. And even this past winter, I'm laying in bed, 11 o'clock in the night, it was snowing, and all of a sudden, I could hear the sirens going off. All right? I'm laying in the bed, freezing, and these folks are going out there, putting their lives on the line, and not only with a fire, but treacherous weather besides. Far as I'm concerned, we owe this to the firefighters who protect us. Thank you.
Last but still, to the public hearing? Anybody else?
David Spencer, 127 Milford Street Extension. I, I was unaware that the fire truck was in, you know, such need of replacement. And I mean, I, I saw them in action about a year ago on my street, and, I mean, it was incredible what a team our Fire Department is, all credit to them. Now, the budget. The state this past year took away 1.9 million, and at the same time, the Board of Education asks for a 5.13% increase. To me, that's sheer arrogance. The Board of Education's budget should be zeroed out. We got all these assistants. We got three principals at a small high school. At Linden School, we have 13 kids in each of the, the kindergarten classes. And we got an abundance of secretaries. We got an assistant superintendent. I grew up in a different age, maybe. I mean, why? I'm beginning to feel like a serf. I'm beginning to feel like a vassal, and the Board of Education are beginning to look like the modern-day lords and ladies, and such an elite class that they, um, they just demand everything from them. Every year, it's more and more and more. And they think they're in such a position of elitism, or, or that they're better than us, that we have to pay it every, every year. I mean, I think I could put a team together and probably cut $2 million out of that budget very quickly without missing a beat in our actual education of, of the children. I mean, why do we need an assistant superintendent? He's recently, I mean, I don't want people to lose their jobs or anything, but money doesn't grow on trees. It's a finite amount of money, and, and, I mean, my 50 or so friends and church members and acquaintances, who are now living in other states because they just can't take the taxes in this state and this town, you know, testify to the fact that we just can't afford it, and somebody has to start being able to look out after the taxpayer. It's, it's, it's just, I mean, I just recently read the assistant superintendent's description, self-described what his job is doing. And I read it three times. And at the end, I'm thinking, what is his job? Why do we need an assistant to a superintendent? I mean, it, you know, to me, it amounted to, it's a good place to hang out until some superintendent job somewhere else opens up and I can go apply for it. So I mean, I just... The Board of Education just has to learn how to do without their next increase. Thanks.
Anybody else wish to speak to the public hearing? Anybody else?
Dave Albert, 56 Hollyberry Lane. Just take a look at the New Britain budget, see how much they spent on fire alone, and give 'em their truck. Thank you.
Anybody else wish to speak to the public hearing?
George Fensick, 2 Pinecrest Drive. Take a budget and look at it again and see where you can find money without increasing it for the Fire Department. They do deserve the truck. Not only do these people protect our town, they provide a lot of other things to the town, such as raising money for scholarships, et cetera. So they're more, they're really part of the community here. They're not just people that go out and fight fires. So if anything, you wanna protect them, as well as protecting the citizens of the town, look for the money within the budget that you have and give 'em the fire truck. That's all.
Does anybody else wish to speak to the public hearing? Anybody else? Last chance. Okay. Close the public hearing. Thank you for your comments. Moving on. We have a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any additions or corrections to the minutes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Announcements and reports? Do we have any announcements to make? Any reports from your liaison assignments? Okay. Appointments and resignations? Do we have any appointments tonight? Report of the Town Attorney. Attorney Mastriani, do you have anything for us?
I do not, for the time being.
Oh, you don't? We're moving right along here. It's a good meeting. Okay. Report of the Town Manager. Mr. Lee, your turn.
I do have a brief report.
I knew you'd have something to say.
A couple of items. First is what I'm calling an 8-24 referrals. We received a letter dated March 15, 2018, from Attorney Kenneth Laska, representing a property owner adjacent to Norton Park, and he is offering to donate land along the Farmington Canal for the future multi-purpose trail. The parcel consists of approximately 5.24 acres. A second letter dated March 19, 2018, from Jeffrey Sager of FCP-2 LLC is requesting the abandonment of a portion of Corporate Avenue in order to help to facilitate future development opportunities. The portion to be abandoned is approximately 670 linear feet and a little less than one acre in total. Before the Town Council can act on either of these two requests, they must first be referred to the Planning and Zoning Commission for what is known as an 8-24 referral. This referral is for the Planning and Zoning Commission to determine whether or not these requests are in conformance with the town's plan of conservation and development. There is an item under new business that would refer these two matters to the Planning and Zoning Commission for 8-24 referrals. Next item I have is fair housing. Annually, the town of Plainville is required by the state and federal agencies to endorse a fair housing policy. The purpose of the fair housing policy is to help ensure equal opportunity for all persons to rent, purchase, obtain financing, and enjoy all other housing-related services of their choice on a nondiscriminatory basis as provided by state and federal law. There is an item under new business regarding the Fair Housing Plan Resolution for Plainville. It's something that we do annually. Scott is, Colby is not here this evening, but I did receive two happenings, two, two reports. They're relatively brief. I'll go over them. First is the Plainville Senior Center, who always submits, and there's always a lot of things happening at the Plainville Senior Center. Please keep these dates in mind. Thursday, April 12, at 10:00 a.m., they're gonna have a program on how to fall safely. That's a, that's an important thing as you get older, and as I've learned personally myself. So I would encourage anybody, as you get older, this might be a good program to go to, just to maybe learn a few tricks as you're heading for the floor. Next item is Live Well with Diabetes Workshop. That's gonna be on Tuesday, April 17. And is that through May 29? And that's at 3:15 p.m. in the afternoon. That's on Tuesdays. Next item they have is on Thursday, April 19, at 9:30 a.m., Losing Sight and Sound Without Losing Your Confidence. It's a program for older adults. And the last item they have is on Thursday, April 19, at 3:00 p.m., What's on Your Plate: Keys to Living a Healthy and Energetic Life. I would recommend that anybody who has any interest or knows somebody who might benefit for any of these programs, you can call the Senior Center for more information. If you catch Sean before the day's out, the evening's out, too, you can catch it right here as well and save yourself a phone call. Next, I, I did receive some happenings also from the library. They have a lot of things that are going on at the, at the Plainville Library as well. On Mondays at 10:30 a.m. through April 16, they'll be having a preschool storytime for ages three to five. On Monday, April 9, the Children's Department will be hosting a Peter Rabbit Storytime for children three to, three through eight. On Tuesdays, on Tuesdays at 10:30 a.m. through April 27, they'll be having baby and toddler storytime. Lot of storytime opportunities here. But they also have the Tuesday Night Book Club, which is gonna be on April 3 at 7:00 p.m. These are for, generally for adults. The book being discussed is A Man Called Obi by Frederick Bachman. Wednesdays, 3:30 p.m., they are gonna have Fingers, Flying Fingers Knit and Crochet Group, and that's an intergenerational program. Wednesday Night Book Club, they meet April 18 at 7:00 p.m. to discuss Invention of Wings by Sue Monk Kid. Wednesday, April 25, from 5:30 to 7:00 p.m., and the Children's Department will be hosting what they call a Fan, Fandom Guild for ages 13 and up. Last but certainly not the least is on Wednesday, April 11. Children's Department will be holding what they call a Lunch Movie Theater, where children can come and enjoy a movie. I think this, this movie on Wednesday, April 11, is Jumanji: Welcome to the Jungle. It's rated PG-13. Lasts about two hours, so... And again, please call the Plainville Library for more information on any of these programs that they're, that they will be having during the month of April. I'll have the report as far as happenings in my report this evening. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them for you.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for the Town Manager on his report or his happenings Yes, Ross, thanks very much.
You're welcome.
We are now in our public comment section of the meeting. During this meeting, we welcome members of the public to come to either podium. Please state your name and address. You will be given one opportunity to speak to the council for three minutes. Does anybody wish to speak to the council?
My name is Al Chopstechetti. I'm from Bristol. I'm an Army veteran. In 1965, I got drafted for Vietnam. I also got recruited for Army Intelligence. The day I was supposed to ship out to Saigon, my, my orders got canceled, and I ended up going to Army Intelligence, where I have a top-secret clearance and was an Army Specialist, Intelligence Specialist. I served 18 months in Germany, and it was a vacation. That being said, when I retired 10 years ago, I do military projects. I just got done doing 25, and I'm knocking it off. Two that I'm most proud of, I got the welcome sign on a boulevard, and I made a Veterans Monument on a boulevard, and I raised $10,000 for that. So that being said, Bristol lost 17 servicemen in Vietnam. I personally knew five of the 17. I promised myself that every time I seen something wrong with a flag or something that wasn't quite right, I'd try to get it corrected. I see a flag torn or ripped, I knock on somebody's door, I says, "Could you please change it?" Sometimes they say they don't have no money. So I go to Harbor Freight once a month, and I buy two or three flags for $8 apiece. When people tell me they can't change the flag, I give them a flag for free. That being said, I also get, if I see something wrong, I try to rectify the situation, and that's why I'm here tonight. I watched the government channel, Farmington, Plainville, New Britain, Bristol. For the last four or five months, I noticed that in one reason or another, I haven't been down here, but tonight, I promised myself I was coming. What I'm about to say, I'm not criticizing. I'm not. Just trying to rectify the situation. When I'm looking at your program on TV, you have your flags wrong. As the council or anybody in a meeting faces to the public, the flag is always to the extreme right, just the opposite the way you have it. So that's gotta get changed. Bristol made a mistake, and I rectify that. New Britain Public Schools had a meeting, and they had theirs wrong, and I rectify that. So I'm trying to rectify your mistake. I can't believe nobody has ever picked up on it. The last thing I wanna say is I want you to change it to the right way, and I got this in the mail the other day, stickers for my wife for her addresses, and it goes under Flag Etiquette. It says, "When displaying the flag indoors, comma, always position it to the right of a speaker or staging area." That's you people. That's you people. So I'm here to say, put the flag on the other side and correct it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for the information. We appreciate all that you do for your community and ours as well. I take that to heart. Thank you so much. Okay, Candace, you actually were up next. I apologize for not calling you first.
I'm Candace Hall. My address currently is one one-three Shuttle Metal Road. I was very pleased to know that last meeting of the Town Council, you decided not to approve the dog park for the current location. I think that was a very smart move. What I would like to suggest somewhat tongue-in-cheek is that if people are so adamant about wanting a dog park, and they think they can raise the money to take care of it, I would like to suggest that they look into purchasing all or part of the Chung property. The Chung property is not near anybody's house. It looks like a, an area that has been hurt. Any type of a dog park in the Chung property would not impact anybody's home or, or education area. So if the people who feel it's so important to have a dog park, I suggest that they make a real effort to purchase all or part of the Chung property.
Does anybody else wish to speak that has not signed up or has not spoken yet? Anybody else?
Roberta Loria, eighteen Perron Road. In March, I resigned from the Conservation Commission. I would like to explain very quickly my decision. Between June nineteenth, two thousand and seventeen, and February twentieth, two thousand and eighteen, this Town Council heard three hundred and fifty-six responses regarding the trail that would impact certain residents and taxpayers in town. Those responses came in the form of Town Council public comments, petitions, a public hearing, and letters and emails to CROG and the Town of Plainville. I read all these comments, including letters sent to CROG and the town, when I put the following information together. Of the three hundred and fifty-six responses, two hundred and thirty-two were unique individuals from any location. Based on their last response to this project for Plainville, sixty-three percent opposed the trail, thirty-four percent favored the trail, and three percent were concerned, neutral, or suggested a realignment without expressing an opinion. I then looked at Plainville-only residents, which was one hundred and sixty-nine total unique individuals. Based on their last response to this project, sixty-nine percent opposed the trail, twenty-eight percent favored the trail, four percent were concerned, neutral, or suggested a realignment without expressing an opinion. These calculations have been looked at and verified by an actuary. Residents of Plainville came to you by an almost two-and-a-half to one ratio opposing this trail, yet you approved it. The minutes from the February twentieth, two thousand and eighteen, meeting show that you gave your reasons why. Every one of you talked about what you wanted or what you thought, not about what the residents wanted that you were elected to represent every time you sit in those seats. Over the course of this project, I know of a senior citizen that was bullied by a town employee due to it. There was an incident when I was trying to conduct a commission meeting, and bullying by this individual was tried toward me and others present. A Town Council member was present during this, witnessed this, and sat and did nothing. In July, I was stopped by a Town Council member after a council meeting and was told that they would never vote for something like this that would be an impact on our neighborhood. I guess that Town Council member changed their mind after the election. For those reasons, I cannot, in good conscience, give of my time, my skills, my experience, and my energy, and then have to turn around and report to a council, Town Council, that shows a lack of principle and integrity. I respectfully request that my comments this evening be included as part of the minutes, my slide showing the results of my research, a copy of the comments that were made by Town Council members on February twentieth, two thousand and eighteen, as to why you voted the way you did, and my letter that I sent to CROG requesting that it be read as part of the February fifth, two thousand and eighteen, public hearing and included in those minutes.
Does anybody else wish to speak to the council? That has not had a chance yet? Anybody else?
John Kessleck, sixty-five Forestville Avenue. I've been coming to these meetings for a lot of years, and I come here as a citizen with issues that I think concern a lot of residents. I don't come here for a special entrance for myself. I come here as a concerned citizen. I want to discuss something about the Town Budget Meeting, Chapter Seven, Section Six. I think part of that Section Six is obsolete and out of date. It goes back to when we had a Town Budget Meeting, and people spoke, then they were handed paper ballots and go-to-vote. And I want to read a section of that that I think should be changed. I think we need a charter change on this. "The Town Budget shall be adopted by a majority vote of those attending and entitled to vote," those attending and entitled to vote. Now, people aren't attending. Since we passed the all-day vote, I would like to ask this council to consider charter change. I know there's a lot of rules to that, to make this all-day vote to also include absentee ballots, because now you have businesspeople that live out of state, people out of town, and since it's an all-day thing, and it's not like a two- or three-hour meeting, so I'd like this council to consider that. One other thing I want to mention, Phoenix Soil is applying for a permit again. What I believe is, since they changed ownership, they have to apply again, and I want to know if this council will look into that and see if any of our commissions have to be involved in that. Because the other thing that's happening with Phoenix Soil is we're having a huge amount of large dump trucks. I think they're dumping off seventy-two coming down West Main, and are causing a lot of traffic problems at the intersection of Washington Street and North Washington Street. I'd like you to look into that. The other thing, too, that I've been after this council, TillCon issue. There's been a lot of articles in the paper lately, and none of them are in favor of the TillCon project, and I want to ask this council to get together and make a decision where you stand on that issue for our town, and stop lallygagging and waiting for something else to come up from the state. I mean, read these articles. The dog park. I was told that you people did not appoint that committee. Is that true?
True.
Okay. My, my time's up. I'll save this for the next meetings. I got a couple of issues, but one of them is, is that not being appointed by you, and I think it's probably a legal commission, and I want to ask this council to rescind that committee or abandon it and start all over. That'll be officially by you. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak that hasn't had a chance?
Joel Edman, sixty-three Hollyberry Lane. I paid my supplemental tax burden today. This strikes a raw nerve. I should at least thank the three of you on the Town Council who voted against the dog park location, and also Timbalone, one was designed to move the design from the ridiculous trail over two hundred feet or so beyond the water stream away from the Mule Hall Trail. I told that. Again, I think this trail is more of a want than a need, and it will bite the taxpayers of Plainville and New Britain down the road. The preliminary design for it was not that accurate and still is negatively impacting to many, many people, and it should not be allowed to be approved. When I say the design is not that accurate, I'm referring to the ninety-eight percent off-road number and also the length of Plainville's borders. Plainville is only three point oh five miles north to south. To elongate the trail, and that's, that comes from the railroad, by the way, that information, to elongate the trail to five point three miles is insane. When it is stated that it is ninety-eight percent off-road, that is misleading, because at least twenty percent is almost off-road, meaning some of the trail will be alongside the roads, and a lot of it will share part of the roads. For three hundred thousand dollars, I would think that the federal government would expect more than aerial views in a hundred pages or so of inaccurate draft design for a trail that should not even be attempted due to the active railroad that cannot be utilized like the rest of the trail from North Hampton to New Haven Harbor. Now, I have a question. The petition that was submitted in favor of a dog park in Plainville had six hundred signatures, and the question is, were they all verifiable Plainville citizens? A lot of out-of-town people attend the Fireman's Balloon Fest and the Downtown Pumpkin Fest where the signatures were secured, and I suspect that some, possibly many, were signatures from people who didn't live in Plainville. This dog park is a want, not a need. With all that Plainville has going for it, our mil rate should be on the top of the list rather than in the middle based on the lowest equalized mil rate in the capital region. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council that has not done so?
Robert Plannetta, seventeen Rabidu Road. I'd like to honor the veteran that came here tonight by placing the flag in the proper position if I'm allowed to.
Thank you.
Does anybody else wish to speak to the council that has not done so?
Joanne Edmund, one sixty-six West Main Street. And I would like to bring prayer back into the chamber. I haven't said the prayer in a long time, and of course, I've always been at, all of you, that you should say it before the meeting begins.
I do.
But here we are. What?
I do.
Oh, I'm sure. With all the issues you've got at you, coming at you. Oh, you got a lot. Remember, my dissertation last time was just say no. I'll have to do that one again. Here we go. Oh, dear God, our heavenly Father, please grant our Town Council the wisdom, knowledge, strength, and courage to perform their elected duties and responsibilities to the citizens and charter of Plainville. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. Yeah, so a lot of things get out of whack here. Last time I asked you, you should, you should just say no. I asked you, I, I, I wish you had said no to the tearing down of Old Linden Street School, no to the crumb rubber crap over there at the football field at the high school, and I, I wish that you had said no to the trail and no to the dog park, because those two things are going to be budget-line items very shortly down the road. We already can't afford what you're proposing for the budget this year. This is, it's just too much money. And, and I really didn't know about the fire truck. Boy, I'll tell you, that's, that's, that was, that was a surprise to me, and, and all you've been talking about are the schools, the schools, the schools. Nothing against the kids, honestly, but schools don't teach, buildings don't teach. It's the teachers, and we could scale back the amount of employees that we have in the school system. I really think that three principals over there, yeah, principal and two assistants at the high school, that's, and then you have psychologists, and you've got this and that. You know, today, kids have knowledge, but they don't have wisdom, so something's wrong. And I heard that on Fox News. On Fox News.
There it is. There it is.
Listen up, because Fox News has got it. And listen, Sunday night, honest to God, it's wonderful. Mark Levin, if you've never heard him on, 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 on the radio, he is now on Fox News at ten o'clock. It's wonderful. He's, he's my man. So, and can I make a public address?
Well, your time has expired.
Oh, it has.
I don't know what you mean by that.
Because I wanted, I wanted to say something about Desmond's Army. I've been wearing this shirt.
Make it very quick.
Oh, well, see if I can.
Very, very quick.
Wait a minute. I've got to find it.
You've used up your time.
I want to, I have to read it, because I don't want to make any mistakes.
Okay.
They are a wonderful group of people that, and they were at the last breakfast meeting with Senator Martin and Representative Pettit, so they're very aware of Desmond's Army. And the person that was representing the organization Desmond's Army was Linda Plevla. And she was, it says here in the, on this article, I think, Brian, you wrote it. I'm not, I bet you you did. "One concerned citizen, Linda Plevla, represented the organization Desmond's Army, a volunteer group hoping to have legislation passed that will tighten up how the judicial system handles cases of animal abuse." And then it goes on to say, "Desmond's Army is a group of people that look to strengthen and create new laws with our legislators to work against animal cruelty, abuse, abandonment, hoarding, and all of the negatives that go with animals," said Plevla. "And we do so for the animals, but also because there is a very direct link between animal abuse and domestic violence or other forms of violence." So I hope everybody in Plainville, in the state, in the world, in the United States, is, is taking good care of their animals, because we're watching.
Thank you.
Carefully.
Does anybody else wish to speak to the council that has not done so? Anybody else?
Thank you for letting me plug that.
Always my pleasure, Joanne. Anybody else wish to speak to the council? Okay, thank you for your time. I'll close the public comment section. Moving on through our agenda, we have no old business. We're into our new business section. I have a motion for number one, please.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to submit two eight dash twenty-four referrals to the Planning and Zoning Commission regarding a letter dated March fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen, from Attorney Laska regarding Buck Fever LLC property, and letter dated March nineteenth, two thousand and eighteen, from SCP dash two LLC regarding a portion of Corporate Avenue.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number two.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to adopt a resolution entitled Fair Housing Resolution.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Number three.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion to set the location of the annual town meeting for the purpose of voting on the town council's proposed fiscal 2019 budget, the Plainville Firehouse, Tuesday, April 24, 2018, for the hours of 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, number four, everybody, wants to take it.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion to approve and recommend the general government fiscal year 2019 budget, including capital projects, for $22,733,146, and the Board of Education fiscal year 2019 budget for $37,322,912, for a total expenditure budget of $60,056,058.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'm going to continue. I do think, based on what we did in the work session, I really don't like the idea of going to referendum.
Okay.
And what I'm going to do is I'm going to make a motion to amend the original motion and go back to what my plan was, with the help of the town manager, the finance director, as far as removing the $75,000. $28,000 of that was from Department 160. We eliminate the building and grounds pickup truck from the Capitol, 840, for $26,000. And finally, we reduce the Board of Education's budget, Department 910, in the amount of $21,000. We take that 75 and add it to the Capitol account, 840, which would increase that by $75,000. I would like to amend the original motion and add that. And if I could get a second, I can explain why.
Second.
You know, we've gone back and forth on this. You know, we've had comments that, you know, originally, and I'm going to agree with Mr. Fensick, you know, the idea was if we could find $75,000 from the current operational budget, we could then add 75, move the utility to money over. I still think that's our best option. I think, based on what we heard at the public hearing tonight, certainly there's support for putting it in the budget at this time. Let the voters have their chance to vote on it. If it's voted down, we certainly have other options available to us, including a referendum question. I just feel, and I apologize for not letting this go, but I just feel it's that important that we try to include this in the budget at this time. If the budget fails, we certainly have other options available to us and not wait for a referendum in June. I think if we can take care of this in April, would probably be in the best interest of the town, knowing the priority and the need that we have for Engine One. Certainly, as we move forward, I fully support referendum for the tower and future vehicles, and would look to the fire department and town staff to help kind of outline what we're looking at and what our needs will be as we go forward. But I really, one more time, I would really like to ask for your support in removing or eliminating $75,000 from the departments I just outlined and moving that over so we can purchase Engine One through the budget and go from there. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Yes. I would also, I'd like to thank Councilman Wazorko for amending the motion. You know, we heard a lot of information tonight from the chiefs, from the line officers, from family members, from members of the community about public safety. This is about public safety. Not everything is about money. Some things have to come ahead of money. And I'm just baffled that we're even having this discussion, that we didn't, as the chief brought up, 68 cents per household per month to cover the cost of a fire truck, that we're even sitting here and disputing this four meetings later is just ridiculous to me. And I would very much like to include the truck in the budget and not risk it, and not risk the safety and the performance of all these people who volunteer to protect the rest of us.
Any other comments on the amended motion? Madam Chair.
I am going to support this amendment as well, for the same reasons that I articulated during our budget session earlier this evening. We are looking at a piece, an essential piece of equipment that's going into its 30th year of service. That's going to be five years past even what national guidelines are. It's for fire safety and public safety. It's also for fire personnel safety. I realize the arguments, and I certainly understand some of them in terms of going for bonding, but I think for this piece of equipment at this particular time, we should include it in the budget. And then by all means, then we should talk about possible bonding and referendum for further items. But I think this is an immediate need, and I think we were able to come up with the dollars so that it doesn't increase the budget more than what we were initially looking at it. So, I am going to be voting for this amendment.
Any other comments on the amended motion?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'm going to admit I made a mistake. I'm human, I know. Doesn't happen often, but it does happen. I made the mistake of looking at this fire truck as money from the start. I was looking at this as dollars and cents, pennies on the bottom line. And honestly, I've been in favor of spending the money. I have, and what the impact is to the town financially. Look, I pay taxes here, too. None of us want to pay more. But hearing the stories tonight and thinking about what these men and women do for us, and, you know, I want them to be safe. I want me to be safe. I want all of us to be safe. I want everyone coming home every night to their families, looking at those pictures. You know, I think it's in the best interest to put this money in the capital budget and get this truck on the books this year and not take the risk at referendum. We can worry about the tower and the others down the line, but let's get this one done this year.
Any other comments on the amended motion? All those in favor of the amended motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Amendment motion fails. Back to the original motion. All those in favor of the original motion?
How about discussion?
Madam Chair, may we have a two-minute recess?
I'm sorry?
May we have a two-minute recess?
Don't recess.
We have a motion to recess for a few minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Was there a second?
A recess. Recession, second?
Second.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second to recess. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
We got three. I need one more. No, we're not recessing. All right, thanks for that. Moving on.
Are we going to have discussion on this motion? Or are you going right to a vote?
To recess?
No, you called for a vote.
I did.
And we didn't have any discussion on them.
We're back to the original motion.
I understand.
Okay, we just finished with the amendment, so let's take one thing at a time. We're back to the original motion. Are there any comments on the original motion?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
The reason I'm supporting the original motion is because, looking at a timeline of when this budget goes into effect compared to when our referendum would be, would be the difference of about a week. And the referendum would come before the fiscal budget is actually in place. So, when looking at a timeline, there is no difference in when you're going to get the new Engine One. And it's very clear, after all of the support here tonight, even from people outside of the fire department, that there's no reason why this will fail at referendum. As you said, you do your jobs where you protect every citizen in this town from fires. That's your job. We all appreciate it, and you all do a great job. We're trying to do our job of protecting the mill rate and the budget over the next 10 years. I hope that you all can understand that and understand why I'm taking the place that I am. I am very confident that you are going to get these two trucks at referendum. And I don't understand where that disconnection is with some other council members, but that is my stance, and that's how I feel.
And I'd like to say, we, there's no impact to the mill rate whatsoever. As Councilman Wazorko pointed out, the $150,000, the $75,000 for the utility truck that the fire department agreed to give up, and the $75,000 in reductions that were proposed makes this budget neutral, and we get a fire engine that is desperately needed. So, the mill rate has nothing to do with it.
You get the fire engine with a referendum, too. And you get another truck. You get two trucks.
Maybe you get, okay, I'm talking. I'm talking.
Please.
I don't have to ask.
The council is now deliberating. I can't take comments from the audience. Please hold your comment till after.
The fact of the matter is that we promised, previous council, but the council promised that this truck was going to be purchased, and now is the time to put it in the budget. It doesn't affect the mill rate at all. We have to keep our word, and we have to protect the community and give these guys the tools that they need to do it.
Are there any other comments on the original motion?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Councilman Wazorko did a great job finding everybody in this room that extra $75,000 this year. However, we all know that it's not just an expenditure this year. It's over the next three years. And by putting this in our debt service plan, we do not have to spend $150,000 of our 800K in capital over the next four years. That money can go towards other things, especially considering we are going to get this truck at referendum. I'm very confident that it will pass, and there's so much support in just this room alone, and I know that there's a lot of fire department supporters outside of this room. You guys are going to get these two trucks at referendum.
Any other comments?
Madam Chair, I just have to be clear. It was through the efforts of the town manager and finance director that we found the $75,000. It really wasn't just me. I appreciate the comment, but, you know, the town staff really stepped up and helped me, helped walk me through this. You know, this is a tough one. I mean, it's, you know, we're talking about $75,000 in a $60 million budget, but the point is, and it hasn't been brought up very much this evening or in previous work sessions, and Councilman Saunders did, or Councilman Saunders, I believe, just brought it up, is that four years ago, I believe, we went through a similar process with the rescue truck and Engine One. And at the time, we said we'd purchase Rescue One, and when that was done, we'd move on to Engine One. And here we are. And I understand taking these items, or this particular item, out of capital would free up money. I just, it just doesn't feel right to me. The right thing for me, the way I think we should go, is put it in the budget, let the voters have the first chance to decide, give us feedback. If it fails, we certainly are going to get a lot of feedback. And the referendum is still out there. I still do believe, once we get through Engine One funding, that the tower, Engine Three, going forward, we should look to bond these types of items. I just believe, this is four years now, we've been really kind of kicking the can down the road. I just feel responsible to put this in the budget at this time. You know, and I know it's going to drive some people crazy, but I just can't support the budget as presented right now. I just can't. And that's my comments.
Okay, anybody else have anything to add? I guess it's my turn because I'm the last one. We already did vote on this budget, accepting it, but apparently, everybody has, with the exception of one person. Apparently, minds have been changed since we voted on it just a little while ago as to what we were going to do with our capital, with our operating budget, and with the Board of Education budget. So, be that as it may, people can change their minds, and that's fine. Regarding the fact that promises were made four years ago or so, I'm sure that was true. However, four years ago, the state of Connecticut was not in the fiscal downturn that we're looking at today. The town of Plainville never lost $2 million worth of education money four years ago that we just lost in January. We are not in the same place that we were four years ago. And that is the reason why we need to handle some of these expenditures in a different manner than we did four years ago. If I can, take a moment, I would like to read some information from our financial advisor. We did not just try to go about this on our own. We actually go to experts that understand the financial condition of Plainville, understand what our long-term debt looks like, and understand what are the appropriate steps we should be taking now in order to position ourselves better, not just for next year's budget, but many budgets out. He writes, "The Fed has been increasing short-term rates for the past few years and expects to continue increasing rates through 2018. Long-term rates have also been increasing due to the Fed and the improved economic conditions. The town could mitigate the risk of increasing interest rates by permanently financing or bonding the fire trucks sooner than later. As discussed, the term of the repayment can range from five years to 25 years." This is a man who advises us on all of our investment thinking, whether it's going to be a road bond, whether it's going to be a school-building project. And we went to him about this particular issue because fire trucks now have to be looked at differently than they were even four years ago. The cost of them is astronomical, and rightly so. They're large pieces of equipment with a lot of stuff on them, and we expect them to last a very long time. But they're not inexpensive. And the plan to put both of these trucks in a referendum scheduled for probably sometime in June is a concept that our financial planner supports, and he recommends at this time. Nobody here said we shouldn't replace Engine One. Nobody. What we need to do as the finance board is to figure out how we can best take care of this, not just next year, not just the following year, but for five or six years out, knowing that there are other things that are coming at us in terms of our capital plan. So, ours is a larger picture of what we need to look at and where we need to go, and the major uncertainty that all of us face are how are we going to be funded by the state of Connecticut? That is $4.6 billion in the red for the next two years. We can take care of these two pieces of equipment. If we put a referendum out in June, the next day, you can order both of them, if that's what you wanted. The next day, if you have all your specs for your pumper, order the truck, and it'll be taken care of. Nobody wants to not take care of the fire trucks or the people that volunteer, that fight fires on behalf of all of our residents. We want to do it in the most thoughtful, responsible way for the fire company as well as the rest of the taxpayers, and how we can manage this in the next several years going forward. That is the reason I'm supporting bonding this. I believe it will pass without any difficulty whatsoever. We're looking at probably a $2.1 or $2.2 million bonding question. We have passed bonding issues far greater than that without any difficulty. We passed the Wheeler School Bonding Project significantly greater than what we're going to ask the community to support for these fire trucks. And all of the folks who had children in not just Wheeler School, but every school in this town, came out and supported that referendum. I am absolutely confident the residents of Plainville will come out and support the referendum for these two pieces of equipment that everybody knows you need. Nobody is denying that. There's no denying of that. It's how we're going to pay for it. And I am sure, with your help, and your family's help, and your neighbors' help, when these referendums go out, they will be very successful. Because any project the fire company takes on is wildly successful, whether it's your pasta dinner, whether it's your balloon festival, wildly successful because you're determined to make it so. And I am sure you would put the same energy and passion into getting this referendum passed. So, for that, I'm going to stay with our original thought of bonding the trucks. I think that's the wisest thing for us to do in terms of the financial health of the town and getting the equipment that you need.
I do have one more comment. Earlier this evening, you said, after Councilman Wazorko said he found the money, and he asked you if you would commit to the referendum, you said you would. And then, not five minutes later, you said you have to wait and see what happens with the state budget. That is precisely why we need to take this issue and resolve it by putting it into the budget. It's not going to hurt the budget. We've talked to the town manager about it. There's absolutely no reason to kick this can down the road. It should be resolved tonight.
It could be resolved in June with the same outcome. And it would set us up better financially for the future and able to lay out our capital plan in a much more thoughtful manner. In terms of what I said earlier, I know Councilman Wazorko In terms of what I said earlier, I know Councilman Wazorko questioned me about, "What if the referendum fails?" Are you going to commit to supporting the truck, correct?
Well, yeah.
How would you do that? And my answer was, quite simply, we'd have to meet, and we'd have to look at everything all over again and figure out what we can do. You're right. I didn't commit a dollar amount, because I have no idea what the state of Connecticut is going to do to this town before the end of this fiscal year, never mind next fiscal year. If I knew that, this would all be wonderful, and nobody would have to worry about a thing. But I worry about all of that stuff. And I worry about getting reduced in all of our grants. We've been reduced this year. We're reduced the year before. Make no mistake, there's going to be another reduction somehow, on top of probably increased gasoline tax, increased sales tax that we're all going to be affected by. So my thinking is that if you want me to commit to a number or specific plan, I can't do it. And I'm honest about that. I said I would absolutely revisit it if the referendum failed, and it would be done immediately. You left that part out. But I'm staying with my original thought that this is the best way for us to purchase both of these pieces of equipment that have been told to us they are very necessary. They are aging, and they're becoming not safe for those who drive them. We cannot ignore any of that. We can't. But we need to do it in a thoughtful manner, and I believe going to referendum with your help is going to make this a reality. Any other comments?
Oh, yes. Madam Chair.
Sure.
Just, I think for clarification, what we did earlier today was to vote on a budget that would be presented at the public hearing and allow the public an opportunity to speak. It wasn't to approve a budget for an all-day vote. That's what we're doing right now. So just to be clear, I did support...
Okay. You did support that number.
I just want to make sure everyone understands. What we did before was just to get to the public hearing and allow public input. What we're doing now is to determine a budget that will be presented at the all-day vote.
And so you're changing due to the public hearing, is that correct? Your thinking has changed because of the public hearing?
No, honestly, it's part of it, yes. But, you know, I think based on the conversations we've had over the last three weeks, there's been a hesitancy, not only on my part. I think most of us can say we've kind of gone back and forth on this. You know, you talked about our financial advisor, you know, in his expert opinion believes that we should be bonding these things out, which is fine. You know, I do think, you know, to counter that, you know, we have some experts in public safety here tonight that said that they would prefer to go in a different direction than that. So, you know, that carries weight. The financial advisor, obviously, his input carries weight. What you guys do carries a lot of weight. You know, and I don't want to get caught up... Like I said, it's been a struggle for me. It really has. You know, this isn't as easy as it looks on TV, you know?
I don't think we look that good on TV.
Well, you know what? And if we don't, my mother and grandmother are always very quick to give me suggestions.
We know. We know.
You know, check out Plainville Talks if you want to know more.
I try not to.
But honestly, I just, I really feel that our best option is to go through this, Engine One, through the budget. If it fails, if the budget fails, we're going to get feedback. We can go in another direction. But the bottom line is if we go through the budget process, they can order that truck on April 25th as opposed to waiting till June 7th or whatever that day after the referendum is. That's, you know, and, you know, and, you know, I'm very mathematical by nature. And I understand, you know, God forbid something should happen in those six weeks where we could have had something passed. And I know statistically, you know, the chances are probably pretty low that we have some kind of event, catastrophic event, loss of life event. But the bottom line is, we know it's a problem. I think we owe it to the community to try and take care of this as quickly as we can. And right now, the quickest way is to get it to a budget vote.
Well, why don't we just put this original budget out to vote and let the voters decide?
Why don't we just do that? The motion is to put a budget of $60,056,058. Why don't we do that? Put it out to the voters. Why don't we do that? Because you like, you want to have the voters decide.
Because right now, it doesn't include Engine One.
Why don't we put this budget out there and let them decide?
Because right now, it doesn't include Engine One.
Let them decide that. Let the voters decide.
I would prefer to let them decide with Engine One in the budget.
Exactly.
And we go the other way. I mean, and you see how we, you know, we're coming, same issue, but, you know, neither one of us is right or wrong. This is how it works. I mean, we have difference of opinions. You know, it's, I understand where you're coming from. I just don't agree with it.
Okay. Same here.
And, you know, I know we need five votes to get this passed, and, you know, not trying to be difficult, but I really, this is something that, right now, I just believe the best way to handle this is put it in the budget. And as you said, I mean, I think we have much more common ground than it sounds like right now, but, you know, let them decide with it, with Engine One in the budget. And then, if it doesn't pass, we can go from there. We immediately can adjust the budget however we want and send it out again. Referendum is always still an option. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other thoughts on the motion before we vote? Okay. All right. The motion's been made. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Nay.
Fails? Four, three. Now, our next steps.
Madam Chair.
Our next steps. We do have to recommend a budget to go before the public. So would you like to reconvene yet again to work on the budget?
Yes, I would.
Okay.
I'm available Tuesday and Thursday of this week.
All right. Let's, um, let's give some dates to the town manager. We all need to look at our calendars and see what's available. We will...
I'm not available Thursday.
You're not available Thursday?
Available Tuesday or Wednesday.
Okay. Well, again, let's make out some dates after tonight.
Do you want to be there?
Mr. Wazorko.
Yes.
I'm speaking. If you could stop.
I'm sorry. I apologize.
We'll put some dates out to the whole council. Look at your calendars. Put up some recommended dates this week that you think are going to work for you, that you could commit to. If we can do that by tomorrow morning, anything that Mr. Lee is not available for, he'll certainly let us know. Thursday's out at this point in time. Tuesday, Wednesday, or Friday. I know, we don't want to do Friday, but we're kind of, we're coming down to the wire, and so let's look at Tuesday and Wednesday, if we could, for this coming week and get... How much time do you need to notice this?
I believe we post it for Tuesday, just in case.
So for, if we...
If we have it for tomorrow, I can post it. If anybody knows, I can post it tonight.
So do we have time? If we got, agreed to tomorrow, is there time to do this, or do we have to actually do it on Wednesday? Let's narrow that down at least.
It's usually 24 hours, and the meeting would have started prior, but if I can do it tonight.
Well, we can look at that while, you know, we can give our schedules and then check on that in the meantime.
And beyond this week, do we still have time to reconvene before we have to get this thing out where it needs to be sent out for our legal notices and all of that? What's our absolute last date that we need to get this done by? You can let us know tomorrow. Okay. I'm not putting you on the spot for that. All right. So let's do that. We're going to find out the last possible date that Carol needs for her legal notices. We'll figure out a date, hopefully for Wednesday of this week, to see if we can get together again. If not, we'll, please offer other dates that are, that you can commit to right now that won't change, so that we can, you know, be sure about what we're doing. Okay. It's a lot of talking. Get to the next part of our...
Madam Chair, motion to approve the tax refunds is listed on the addendum.
Okay.
Second.
The motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Madam Chair.
Robert, are there any other discussions of interest, not your part? Okay. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.